What I pay the big bucks for.
I did now. Okay, so all of this was deployed on the recording for the record. Okay, so first on the agenda is a public hearing. We have a public hearing to entertain public comments and introductory local law number five of 2020 entitled definition of lot area, which will amend chapter 310 zoning of the village code to amend the definition of lot area. The public notice is printed in the Times Herald Record on May 15, 2020. We did receive some public comments, which we'll talk briefly about in a little bit. But first, let's start with the public hearing. So I'm sorry, let me get to participants. We'll start one by one. Mr. Gerber, do you have anything you'd like to say? Window one, don't know who that is.
And unmute them.
I am. They have to unmute themselves to.
I still see the little right thing with the cross there.
I'm sorry?
I still see the mute signal on them all.
Yeah, if they're gonna have to unmute on their end if they want to say anything. John? Actually, you know what? Let me just unmute all. For now, yeah. They're still all muted, so.
They've muted themselves. They have to unmute themselves.
Correct. How about we do it this way? If anybody that's joined us has anything to say with regard to this public hearing for introductory local law number five of 2020, please indicate something. Okay. So we did receive a response from the county planning department. As they usually do, they found no evidence that significant intermunicipal or countywide impacts would result from the approval of this new local law. And they have no further advisory comments. We have some other written comments. Des, did we get into that now from the planning board and other written comments? Or we wait till?
Well, we should mention it during the public hearing. They are received.
Okay, so we did receive written response from the planning board and we received two letters on behalf of the shops of Woodbury so far. One from their architect and one their landscape architect and one from their attorney. So with nothing heard from the public, I will take a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Wait, the motion?
That was Jesus and Andrew stand up for a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Need a motion and a second to accept written comments until close of business June 5, 2020. While we first consider comments that we've already received and give the public an opportunity, considering this is a virtual meeting, to provide some written comment if they'd like.
I'll make that motion.
Was Tara? Anyone with a second? Andrew with his hand for a second. Any discussion? Comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Anyone opposed?
Why aren't you voting?
Okay, so now we will move to public comments on agenda items. I will once again unmute all. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to say with regard to any of the agenda items before we get into the administrative business?
Maria Hunter would.
Okay, Mrs. Hunter, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having this meeting tonight with the trustees and having the public participate. I want to ask a question about the planning board escrows. There are two items for village of KJ. One is number 437, the other one is 438. Do either one of them for Ridge Road or for Seven Springs for their water system, for their generators or their chlorination? Is that for that or is it for something else?
Des, do you know?
No, I was just told that these are for applications that are before the planning board, not any site or performance escrows. These are just the payment for the fees for the consultants when they appear before the planning board. If neither of those applications are before the planning board anymore, then they're being returned.
Okay.
So the building department.
All right, well, my question to both of those are then if they are for the work site that was done on Ridge Road and even though it is for consultants, I'd like to ask if the village board would look into having there are a couple of trees that are dead and plantings that were never finished. And being that it's my backyard and I can see some of this, I would like to know if these two items are related to that, to those projects? Because there are some dead trees at the project on Seven Springs Road. And I'm not sure if our consultants can look into that and see why the trees and the plantings have not been completed and/or replaced because they're dead. That's one thing. You want me to continue, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, I guess either myself or Des will look into that. Go ahead.
Okay. The other thing is, I know you're gonna be discussing the introductory local law number six of 2020. My only concern with those were with your consultants and your legal, whoever drew up the law, under membership terms of office. And there's no sour grapes on my part. It's just a question here. You have it that the terms are gonna be after 10 years, but you don't state when it's going to begin, whether it's the terms ending 5/31/2020 or 5/31/2020. And I think that is a very important piece to have in the law, so it's very clear. So anyone that comes on, who, you know, they see that clearly. And then also going forward, is this considered from back service or is this going forward as of when this law takes into effect? So people who were there, I know there are a couple of people who were there five years ago. They may want to come back, so you're not clear about your ending and start times.
I'll answer the second part first, and Kelly, please correct me if I'm wrong, but these are consecutive terms. So if they've already served the term, they've been off, they could apply again. Is that correct, Kelly?
Yes, but I understand Maria's point and it's something we will look into to provide a clarification to the board.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Mayor.
I'm sorry, what about the first question that she asked?
That it doesn't state when it begins. So that's really the issue all wrapped together. So I understand the point.
Okay, then my other question is that, let's say someone from two years ago wants to apply for the planning board for next year. That's less than five years. So you're saying with this law that that person from two years ago, three years ago can't apply again because it says you have to be out of service for five years. Am I reading that correctly?
Kelly?
Yes, sorry, I was nodding and forgot that.
Saw the nod.
Okay, I was just curious as to I know there's a line in there that says that, you know, it's for fresh perspectives and vision. That's why you are doing this. And I understand that. But sometimes having people who know what's going on, because sometimes your consultants change and some people who come onto the board or come onto any board, they don't know the history of the town. And sometimes when you put something like that, you may turn off some people. And it's to me, you know.
So just keep in mind, we're only scheduling the public hearing and doing the referrals tonight, so we will have the public hearing and you can.
Okay, but I thought I would talk about it because it was on the agenda. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Tim?
Yeah, who's that?
It's Neil.
Hi, Neil.
Hi. It's actually on the same thing on the term limits. If it doesn't appear to be, at least in the draft of the law, that there's any flexibility or anything in case somebody comes up after, say, two, five-year terms. And if there's no viable candidate applying for a position, how would that be handled?
If I'm not mistaken, there was something built in that would allow the board of trustees to maintain an appointment until a viable candidate came up. Is that right, Kelly?
I'm just looking at it right now to see what. Give me one minute. I don't see that part built in.
Yeah, and I'm just saying from my years of experience on the board is we haven't always had viable candidates come forward and offer their time and experience to be on the planning or zoning board.
Yeah, I agree with you, Neil, and that's something that.
There is one part that, Tim, you might have been getting to.
That's what I was just looking at. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, is it after the completion of the two consecutive five-year terms, which may be extended by any service to fill an unexpired vacancy? So that would let them go a little bit further than that?
That's what I took that to mean, but maybe we need to clean that language up if that's the intent of the board. So we'll obviously have that discussion and accept public comment when the time is right.
And one other comment, I noticed that the appointment for the zoning board of appeals would be done annually by the mayor. And then with the approval of the board, but I didn't see the same thing in the chair of the planning board. They would be done annually. Now, is that, so one is gonna be done annually and one is not?
I don't believe that's the case. I believe that just might be an oversight.
Right, may want to take, may want, just take a look at that and see.
Okay, thanks, Neil. Do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you, Neil. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to comment that that's just not covered in this part of the law. There is in section 57-2, subsection A2 is where the chairperson of the planning board is appointed annually by the mayor subject to the approval of the village board. So it just isn't in the section that's in front of the board right now. But it is annually.
And that's usually done at the reorg, which is your first meeting in June.
Right, on the 11th.
So no oversight on that one. It's just that it's different provisions that are applicable and that are being revised.
Anyone else? Public comment on agenda items. Who's next? Okay. So we shall move on to administrative business. Acceptance of minutes. Can I please have a motion in a second to accept receipts of the minutes of the meeting held May 14, 2020?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza? Trustee Graziano, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I need a motion in a second to approve abstract 24 containing vouchers 191956 to 192088, totaling $116,408.31. But before we do that, Des, any changes to that?
There's no changes.
This is the last abstract for the fiscal year and we were trying to squeeze in anything from the previous budget into that one. So I'll double check to make sure there's no changes. So a motion in a second, please.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez? Trustee Buick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Anyone opposed? All right, closing of various escrow accounts, excuse me. Need a motion in a second to close escrow accounts listed by Clerk Potvin for applications that were before the planning board and have either been completed or withdrawn as requested by the building department.
I'll make the motion.
That was trustee Graziano.
I'll second.
Trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? We have an extra item, a change of start date for Alex Presti. Due to the pandemic, Alex Presti was unable to give his two-week notice to his current employer. Therefore, his start date needs to be amended to reflect this new date. May I please have a motion in a second to change the start date of Alex Presti as assistant building inspector from June 8, 2020 to June 15, 2020? Trustee Jacomaza?
I'll make that.
Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion?
That won't affect any of the civil service stuff you were talking about last time, will it?
No, we've already informed civil service. They've been slightly lenient because of the pandemic and whatnot. And Alex's current employer only just recently opened this week, like our building department did because of the phase one. So, and I think it's very, you know, commendable of him that he wants to give the two weeks so that he's being fair. Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you. All in favor? Excuse me, any other discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Old business. We need to schedule interviews for the comprehensive plan committee. So I would make suggestions from the board as to when you'd like to do this. I'm pulling up my calendar.
Do we want to do them all together? Do we want several of us? How do we want to handle this? It's the kind of discussion.
Well, I would think that the board, just like we do planning and zoning board appointments, would want to be involved. And if by together you meant all of us or all of the interviews in one evening, I think you probably meant all of us, right?
The two committees, no?
Well, we didn't finish taking that letters of interest for the second one, as far as I know.
No, Jim Ford.
So, you know, I mean, so then we should probably do it before, maybe before the June 11 meeting again?
I have no problem with that personally. You have a suggestion for a day, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, what does everybody think? I mean, we could do.
Evening of June 11, like we did the interviews for the zoning.
Oh, you mean right before the meeting, my apologies.
Just keep in mind, we have much more candidates for this.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I mean, we'd have to get started relatively early. And that's a pretty busy night, too. We have to reorg that night. I'm okay with it if you want to do it that way, or would you, Andrew Shaken has said no.
I'm fine with it. No, no, no.
Yeah. So how many candidates do we have to interview? Is it seven?
I think it's actually six because one of them that applied, you're now appointing, so. Right.
So. What time?
Six o'clock.
It gives us a little over an hour, hour and 15 to do six people.
Yeah, if you do 15 minutes each, that only gives you time to do five people.
Yeah. How about, I would say no later than 5:30 personally, and I, we could go earlier than that even, but it really depends on what everybody else thinks.
Yeah, but what if the people aren't available at 5:30? I don't know what, who applied, what their schedules are. I'm just trying to.
That's why I'm suggesting it might be better off being on a night other than a.
I agree.
We could start later and then we could go as long as we need to.
I'm fine with that, too.
Tuesday, ninth?
Tuesday, ninth. Let me just double check.
June 9? Yeah, I'm good.
So just so you know, how it's usually handled is I send them an email with a time and a date. This way they know, especially since we had to do it virtually like this. And then if they can't make it, your interviews are usually held one night, so I'm gonna suggest maybe you do 20 minutes instead of 15 because of the fact that this is a new committee and you might want to spend more time with each individual.
You go read my mind again. I was thinking the exact same thing.
Sorry.
If anybody, you know, we can have a makeup night. If, you know, maybe we could do anybody that can't make it on the night before the meeting on the 11th.
So that's how you want me to handle it? Give them the option, one or the, give the option one or the other?
What I would rather do is try and get it all done on Tuesday night, the ninth, starting at 5:30, 20-minute interviews. If somebody absolutely can't make it on the ninth, we'll see if they could do the 11th before the meeting and then we'll start it. Either 5:30 or 6 on the 11th for the remainder. Sound reasonable, everybody?
Eric, Desiree, I actually think you have eight or nine applicants.
You know, I don't have that with me where I am at because I didn't know that that was gonna be questioned. I did email them to you.
Yes, that's right. And I don't have it in front of me either, but I thought it was eight or nine. And one of them where, is off that list.
Wait, wait, wait. I have it in front of me. Hang on. I have it on my computer. There are nine attachments and there's one, two, three, four, five. I just want to make sure that we're only taking one off. Six, seven, eight. That one comes off. You're right, there's nine. I apologize. My memory was failing me. So, yeah, there is nine. So why don't you do both dates at 5:30 and then I'll fit the people in between those two timeframes? Does that work for y'all?
Works for me.
I mean, you want 20 minutes scheduled for each? 15, 20 minutes?
15, I think. CJ, what are you thinking?
15, okay. I'm fine with either one. 15 and we'll have enough buffer if we hit the door a little bit.
Correct, okay.
I'm sorry, you just said 15 minutes instead of 20. We'll go back to 15?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So we're gonna. All right, so June 9th.
All right, so.
June 11th, starting at 5:30.
Here's the motion that I'm requesting then. Any further discussion about this before we do any motions?
I think you should give more than 15 minutes per person.
I kind of like 20. I was, yeah.
I think with all of us asking questions, judging, we kind of rushed.
We did rush the other interviews and this is gonna be more in-depth and I just have my, I've got feeling that this is gonna be a little bit more in-depth.
So 30 minutes?
No, I think 20, I think 20 would be good. And then if we needed 25, at least we'll have some kind of leeway a little bit.
We could always, yeah, okay, let's just leave it at that.
Depending on the person, you don't know. People might not speak. I mean, others might have a lot to say.
Are we doing them all on Tuesday?
We're gonna make the offer of either night, so we'll, I'm hoping that we'll wind up with half and half or, you know, whatever. We'll see.
Because then on that Thursday meeting, it's gonna be tougher.
We can't, we can't back Thursday more than three, four tops, so.
Yeah, and I'll schedule that without a problem. I have, you know, I have no problem handling all that. I just need to know how much time you want in between interviews so that I can schedule accordingly.
I would say 20 minutes. I think that was a good estimate. All right, so then, may I please have a motion in a second to schedule a special, yeah, a special meeting to be held on June 9, 2020 at 5:30 and/or June 11?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be.
At 5:30.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Well, if we get them all on Tuesday, then we don't have to do the Thursday one. Well, I mean, I'm just saying.
Is 180 minutes. That's three hours. Yeah.
Is what it is. We gotta.
Okay, if you, if you want, I will try to get them all on the ninth. And then if there's anything that can't happen, then I'll just start at seven and go back.
You'd all prefer to scatter them across the two nights, right? All right, so let's do this. I'll start again. May I please have a motion in a second to schedule a special meeting to be held on June 9, 2020 at 5:30 and/or June 11, 2020 at 5:30 to conduct interviews of the individuals that submitted letters of interest to serve on the comprehensive plan committee?
I'll make a motion what he said.
Trustee. The motion?
I'll second.
Derek seconded the motion. Any further discussion before we vote?
Hello, CJ. I mean, Jesus.
I don't know what he was showing us there.
I don't know either.
Right.
I gotta turn it off and on.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on.
Okay, Mayor Queen, Mary, again, if you can send me the Zoom. I know, I know. I'm calling everybody the wrong title this.
What I have in front of me, so you have it all.
I have that. I just need the Zoom links for the two sessions.
Oh, yeah, as soon as I create them, yeah.
Right, right. I include that when I send the email to them.
Of course, I'll do that tonight. Just remind me before we get off.
Super.
Okay. Excuse me?
We lost Jesus.
Oh, yeah, Jesus left the meeting.
All right, we're gonna pause for half a second while Jesus rejoins. We'll consider it a.
Intermission.
Yeah, I was gonna say interlude.
Potato chip, anybody?
Now's the time to crunch.
Now's the time to crunch. Excuse me while I mute my microphone.
No, I don't want to keep everybody waiting too long. We'll just wait a minute, half a minute or so.
Here he comes.
All right, good.
I really want.
Okay, there we go. Okay, good. We paused to allow you to come back into the.
Oh, thank you.
We didn't want to move on without you. All right, so now we have appointments. May I please have a motion? Oh, let me start by saying that last week, as a board, we conducted interviews for planning board applicants and zoning board of appeals applicants. There were several candidates. All of them were qualified. All of them were good. All of them interviewed well. So we definitely had our work to cut out for us with regard to appointing individuals. So we discussed and we came to conclusions and now we're ready to appoint new members to both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. So with that said, may I please have a motion in a second to appoint Thomas DeLuca to the planning board with a term to expire May 31, 2025?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Personally, I'd like to thank Rich Cattagio for serving on the planning board seat, which he's held since 2010, as well as serving on the zoning board of appeals prior to the planning board. And he graciously accepted a transfer, if you will, to the planning board when we needed somebody with a little bit of experience there. And I believe that was, well, that was 2010. Rich served the Woodbury community well and we truly appreciate his service. I just want to say that. So thank you, Rich.
Just so you know, Des, I did not vote, so I don't know if you need that for, I abstained.
One time I didn't ask.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that you did that and I will mark it down right now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You did not hear her silence?
It's not off and then I'm quiet.
Thank you for pointing it out, Tara. I appreciate it.
All right, so now we move on to zoning board of appeals. And again, we had many candidates. Everybody interviewed well, so I may, may I please have a motion in a second to appoint Andrew Zumas to the zoning board of appeals with a term also to expire May 31, 2025?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza with the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion here? All in favor?
Aye.
What I, any knows or abstentions? Okay. So I'd also, as before, would like to thank Gary Kestenbaum for serving on the zoning board of appeals. Bless you. He held that seat since 2017 and prior to that, he also served on the zoning, excuse me, on the planning board. He served the ZBA with professionalism and integrity and we're really gonna miss his expertise. Both Gary and Rich, again, deserve our appreciation for their service to the community over the years, so thank you both. Moving on to new business. Introductory local law number six of 2020. So this introductory local law sets new terms and term limits for planning board and zoning board of appeals members. The terms would be five years and members would serve no more than two consecutive five-year terms. So we're gonna take several actions tonight. If I'm not mistaken, it's four different actions tonight with this. So I may, may I please have a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law number six of 2020, which would amend sections 57-2B and sections 310-49A of the village code to provide for uniform terms and term limits for village planning board and village zoning board of appeals members.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza? Have a second?
A second.
Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, so next, I need a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on August 13, 2020 to obtain public comment on introductory local law number six of 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Buick and I'll take trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about I? Any knows? Okay. Next is the referrals. I need a motion in a second to refer introductory local law number six of 2020 to the county planning department for the 239 review and to the village planning board for comments.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee. Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? I vote aye. Okay, that was three actions for that. Okay, moving on. Excuse me. I need a motion in a second to, excuse me, discussion of water protection overlay district proposed law. So again, this one, we're gonna take several actions. This one, I believe, there are four. So I need a motion in a second to first declare the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees as lead agency with respect to introductory local law number one of 2018. That's how far back this one goes.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano and trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. So next, we've already reviewed part two EAF prepared by council. So I need a motion in a second to request additional reports from our consultants to evaluate the items noted in the EAF and the local law prepared by attorney Kelly Martin.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza?
I'll second.
Trustee Buick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, so next are the referrals. I need a motion in a second to refer the revised zoning local law to the Orange County Planning Department and the Village Planning Board.
A motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion?
I'll second.
Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And lastly, I need a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on June 11, 2020 at 7:30 on the adoption of introductory local law number one of 2018.
I'll make that. I'll make that motion.
The trustee Buick with the motion, trustee Jacomaza with the second. She got you just by half a second. Any knows? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that's all the, the four actions that we're gonna take with regard to that. And obviously, we'll talk more about that in future meetings.
No, there's one more.
Yes, there is. As I just scrolled down the screen, there is. So I need a. I need a motion in a second to schedule a work session to be held after the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty meeting to meet with consultants to discuss introductory local law number one of two thousand and eighteen entitled Water Quality Protection Overlay District.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Eric with the second, any discussion? All in favor? And I vote aye. Anyone opposed? Excuse me. So we have an extra item on the agenda. Notice of intent to establish lead agency for Monroe Ninninger LLC. So, on May eighteenth, twenty twenty, the village received the notice pursuant to Part Six Seventeen of the Implement, of the Implementing Regulations pertaining to Article Eight of the Environmental Conservation Law, otherwise known as SECRE, that the Town of Monroe Planning Board received an application from Monroe Ninninger LLC for site plan and special permit approval of a four-story, four-hundred-thousand-six-hundred-forty-six-square-foot mixed-use commercial building with retail, office space, and a thirty-nine-room hotel on a parcel containing eighteen-point-two acres, plus or minus, known on the Monroe tax map as Section Two, Block One, Lot Ten. This parcel is located in Monroe's heavy industrial zoning district and the project requires a zoning amendment to increase the maximum height permitted to fifty feet, I believe their current code is forty feet. The project is known as Monroe Commons. The Monroe Planning Board has made the following findings. One, the proposed action is subject to SECRE. Two, the action may involve one or more other agencies. Three, the action is preliminarily classified as a Type One action and four, the coordinated review of the action is appropriate. Considering the significant impact of this project to the local area, I've already requested both our attorney and engineers review the SECRE documents to determine how our village would be affected, in particular with regard to water, sewer, stormwater runoff and traffic. So with that said, I'm looking for a motion to consent that the Monroe Planning Board serve as lead agency in this application and that the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees requests that they continue to be notified on filings and hearings on this matter.
The motion.
Okay, trustee Gomez with the motion, trustee Jacomaza had his hand up with the second. Any discussion, comments, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye, anyone opposed? Okay. So that concludes regular business. So now we'll go to public comment, I'm gonna unmute all and then call on everybody one at a time for comment. So let's start with whoever's labeled iPhone, I don't know who you are. Does iPhone have anything to say? And if so, please identify yourself, no? Okay. Sandy?
Yes, I just had a quick question on Monroe Commons. So if I understand that you, you are consenting to them being lead agency?
Well, it's in the town of Monroe, the Monroe Planning Board has the most input and information with regard to this application, so yeah. We don't really have a stand, a standing to be lead agency and it is in the town of Monroe, but we are obviously very interested and concerned about this project, so that's part of what this motion was, yes.
Okay, but are you going to request to be an involved agency rather than?
We already have and we have our consultants not only reviewing the SECRE documents but preparing a response to the SECRE documents with regard to the things that I mentioned, water, sewer, traffic.
I thought I saw somewhere where the village was going to only be listed as an interested rather than an involved.
They can only be, the Village of Woodbury can only be an involved agency if it's actually issuing a permit. There's no other way to become an involved agency, so at this time, I'm not aware of any permit that the Village of Woodbury would actually be issuing, so they could only be an interested agency.
Okay, all right, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. DeLuca?
Well, just want to say thank you for the appointment and the conference of the board and I look forward to working with you guys.
And us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zumis?
You're welcome.
I would also like to echo those sentiments and thank the board and I hope I do you justice and I will try very hard to be as involved as the predecessor and hopefully carry on that same legacy, so thank you all for the opportunity.
We have high hopes for you as well, thank you. Names are moving around here, so John?
No comment, thank you, sir.
Thank you, John. Linda, one again?
None, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Mrs. Hunter? Nope, okay.
Yeah, there we go. Yes, first of all, my thanks to Rich Cattagio and to Gary Kestenbaum. Both gentlemen were on the ZBAs and planning boards as you stated, so thank you for their great work. Congratulations to Tom DeLuca and Andrew Zumis, good luck on your future endeavors. Also, I want to do a huge shout-out to Mayor Egan, Assemblyman Schmidt and Falkirk Estate for seven weeks providing twice a week meals to our seniors and people who may have need dinners. Just so that you're aware, the Hunter family, we have two seniors and they both greatly appreciated the meals and it was a great service that was provided to the village residents, so thank you on that part. Also, in regards to the Monroe Commons, just please look at their plans real closely because when they were for the Planning Board, we had a work session with Mr. Golden about two, three years ago. They wanted to use the parcel of Woodbury that was behind this project for parking only. And at the time, Mr. Golden stated that parking only was not allowed and this directly connects to WP three, so there was some concerns there, so I would like everyone on the Village Board, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, just to keep that in the back of your mind about that, that lot that's landlocked with Woodbury property. And also, one other thing, we did receive our tax bill today. Can someone, real brief and like five sentences or less, what, what was the increase for with the water department for a hundred-and-eleven and a half percent increase? I'm just curious, what, what is being done in five sentences or less, I don't need a whole statement. If anyone can answer me that.
Would you like me to answer that?
Please.
Sure, Ms. Des.
She was asking maybe, yeah.
That is because of the bond payments that have come through the cycle and
Okay.
They're, they're quite high bond payments because the bond that was taken out two years ago for the improvements, a bulk of the improvements are being done in the consolidated water and a small portion of the consolidated sewer, so a bulk of the bond payment and interest payment has to come out of the consolidated water.
Thank you, and, you know, and thank you to the board for decreasing the other portion of the village tax bill by a minor percent, so thank you for that.
Also, 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 we also budgeted to do a study for our water system, didn't we CJ?
Yes, we're, you know, in, even with that, we've also, we put in a study to do a master plan to kind of map out our resources with an engineering firm to say what the level of investment should be over how many years.
Okay, thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Thanks for having me as well. Let's see, Mr. Kerber? Nope, okay. Anybody else?
Robin, you didn't call.
I do, actually, yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Robin.
Thank you, Des.
No problem, Robin.
A couple of meetings ago, Tim, you had mentioned that the town and village were very close to a settlement regarding the lawsuit. Yet on social media, Councilwoman Hernandez, again, going back a couple of weeks, whatever, had responded to another thread. I'm just gonna read a portion of it because it's very lengthy. Again, this is from Mrs. Hernandez. She says, "I had no intention initially of running until I watched the village board meeting where money was switched from a line item designated to help resolve litigation between the town and the village to an account for litigation." "It was at this point that I realized that the potential agreement between, between our current mayor and supervisor may fall apart resulting in a continued lawsuit." So my question to you, Tim, and the board actually, first of all, is that statement correct?
So, there are two parts to that. One is the budgetary part, which I'll let Desiree answer because I'm not a hundred percent sure on what that was about, but I'll answer the second part first. Nothing's changed, as far as I know. We're still waiting for some, and I, and obviously, you know, we can't get into terms of any potential settlement or anything like that. But I can tell you that, that nothing's really changed. I can't speak, obviously, for any of my other board members or certainly not for anybody on the town board, but we're still waiting for information. And I've been told recently in the past week and a half or so that that information is still coming, so we should have it soon, so, you know, it's, it's been set for trial, I want to say in the fall, I think September if I'm not mistaken. Kelly's nodding yes, is that correct?
Yes, but everything on the courts right now are on hold, they're slowly trying to start things up, but
Yeah, that was before.
I don't know what they're gonna do.
Who knows what that's really gonna look like, but but the, the reason the court date or the trial date rather was moved by the judge was because she had been told by both council for the village and the town that we were in discussions. So, that's still happening, but Des, can you address the first part? About moving from one account to another, and before you do, I'm gonna assume, I didn't talk to Jackie about this, I don't know exactly what she meant, but I'm gonna assume that she's inferring by whatever it is that she saw, that that's what she meant, I don't know, I can't speak for her.
Well, I, I can't speak for her either, but I, I am going to assume she's referring to our budget work session that we had where we discussed the, under the judgment and claims light item of your budget, we budgeted the sixty thousand and change for the one portion that was agreed upon at the, one of the joint meetings that were held with regards to the final bond payment on the highway garage. That money is still in your judgment and claims, it had not been moved to litigation, so I'm not sure. Maybe the volume was such that she couldn't understand what was being said, I, I can't speak on her behalf, but that money is in your budget. It is, I don't have the number memorized off the top of my head.
Sixty-one or sixty-two thousand, it's the bond.
Yeah, sixty-two thousand. And it's under judgment and claims, which is like nineteen-ten-point-four-hundred or something like that?
But we left it in that, we did not switch it, so.
We did not, no.
That claim was not correct.
You got any questions, Robin?
Well, actually, I do, as a, you know, and thank you all for that information, but at the, at the town board meeting of May twenty-first, again, Jackie had, had mentioned that she would be willing or would like to see the board sit down face-to-face and, I'm paraphrasing, but basically hashing out what's been going on for the last two years. I don't know specifically what she was talking about, but I am asking and imploring the, the village board to whatever you can do to turn this around and end this ridiculous lawsuit. Over thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent on the town side alone. Tens of thousands from the village, this has got to stop.
I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly and that was, you know, my personal intent and again, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else. And that's what I want to see happen as well, so as far as having it face-to-face with both full boards like we did in, a couple times in twenty eighteen, I believe.
March, March and April.
I think, I, I think that's a great idea as well, but that can't really happen until we get through the the process that we're going through right now, sorry, I can't be any more specific than that.
No, that's okay.
Okay, do you have anything else, Robin?
No, thank you, though.
You're welcome, all right, I don't, Mr. Torres? Or Mrs. Torres?
Okay, yes.
Did you have anything to say?
I, yeah, I, I'm used to I, I'm just concerned, I know several years ago, I had asked regarding police force in, in our town, if the police force should be able to be similar to our to the community, you know, it, it should and I remember, I remember going to Paloma, I remember asking you also when you were running for, for mayor and
Actually, I think that conversation was when I was running for reelection as trustee.
Right, okay, right, that was several years ago and Woodbury seems to be the only municipality that doesn't have a female or male African-American. And
Mr. Torres, can I just interrupt you for a second, I, I know you're aware of this, but it's a town department, we have no control over that?
Well, no, I'm aware of that, but I, 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 I know, I, I know that, you know, you're, you know, when, whenever I, we, we try to talk to the supervisor, it goes nowhere, I, I know you have good communication with him, maybe you should get the, the answer for us.
Okay, I can certainly ask either the police chief or the supervisor, sure. So.
What's the question, Mr. Torres?
That's exactly what I was gonna ask, but also, please state your first name so Desiree can get it down for the minutes or, and or Kelly.
Ray Torres, my, my question is why, why is it taking so long for our municipality to hire a African-American male or female officer that should reflect the community itself? Why, why is that? I'm just curious.
Okay. Anything else?
No, no, you, you, you think you could come to an answer?
Well, I, I don't know if I could come up to an answer, but I've already stated I can ask the question on your behalf, but Desiree, her hand up, yeah, Des.
Yeah, all I can tell you is that those positions are civil service positions and we are required, just like any type of government position that exists, other than deputies, we are required to hire off a civil service list that is prepared by the County of Orange and it's based on a test that individuals take. I think the same thing, and I'm sure Jesus can talk about this, this happens in New York City, you have to be on a list and you have to score a certain score, for lack of repeating myself. And then we're required to hire from the top three on the list that, that applied for the job. That's that's how, that's how, you know, that's how it works in, in government and similarly as it does in, in the city, I'm sure.
Okay, so, all right, so I, I, I'm sorry to cut you off, so.
No, it's okay.
Is that what you're saying happened here, because, so it, it wasn't because maybe someone knew somebody and they got their son into the force because of, of that, it had to be with a list test, is that what you're telling me?
The way it works in Orange, I, I can always speak for Orange County and we just did the same thing when we hired Mr. Presti for the building department. You have to get a list from the County Department of Human Resources, it's called civil service list and what it is, is a, a list that's compiled based on a test that is given by the state of New York and you have to hire off the list and you're required to hire from the top three highest scores on that list. So there's no favoritism, there's no neputism, if you, if, if you are not reachable on that list, you cannot be considered.
Okay, okay.
I can't speak for the town because I'm not involved in the town's hiring process, but that is the procedure that has to be followed by the state of New York in the County of Orange.
Okay, all right, I, I just found it, you know, I just find it kind of odd, it's been so long, this, this community, I mean, I've been, I've been here over twenty years and not one, not one female or male African-American has been hired at all. I, I just see that, you know, observe, you know, I, I just can't believe it.
All right, so, like I said, I will, I will ask either Frank or, or the police chief.
I mean.
I can get an answer for you, I will.
And, and, and you can ask, you could tell Frank, I mean, you can ask Frank, because I remember Frank telling me that, that there was a male that they thought, that was, he happened to be Hispanic, but could, could go for I, I guess he, he thought he, he could, he could be, he could be black, considered black also. I guess because of his skin color. I'm wondering, you know, can that be, and, and listen, at that meeting, besides Frank, Jackie was there and Jackie was, you know, taken back a little bit because of that, you know, what was said, so and Jackie says she, she asked about it and she never got back to me regarding that.
Okay, Ray, you have anything else for the village?
Maybe you could get to the bottom of it and let me know what, you know, what happened, what transpired or.
I, I will ask the question, do you have anything else?
No, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, Ray, thanks. Anybody else?
Tim, it's Neil.
Neil Kraus.
Yes, is, is your work session going to be here on, on Zoom?
Which work, yeah.
Work session you have tonight?
Yeah, for the Water Quality, yeah, that'll, that'll, that'll be public.
That's not tonight, that's not tonight, Neil, that's, that's the twenty-fifth of June.
We'll set up, we'll set up a Zoom for that, we'll post it, it'll be, you know.
So the work session isn't tonight, it's going?
We have an attorney conference tonight for something related, yeah.
No, not, not the eleventh, Robin, it's the twenty-fifth of June, the work session. No, not the, not the 11th, Robin, it's the 25th of June, the work session.
Oh, and give it the correction.
The public hearing on that is the 11th, though.
Correct.
Rob and Neil.
Okay.
I agree.
Neil, did you have anything else, or Robin?
No, it just, I'm, I'm very interested in the, uh, water protection overlay.
I know you are. Absolutely, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Excuse me.
Craig Brady. I'm gonna ask Craig Brady, he just signed on, see if he wants.
Mr. Brady, is there anything you'd like to say? We're on public comment.
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Last call. All right, so we'll move to board member comment, I just have a quick comment. Uh, I, I just, uh, kind of piggybacking onto what Mrs. Hunter was talking about, I'd like to thank specifically Wayne Court, Chef Abel, and the staff at Falkirk. Uh, they prepared and packaged, uh, meals for over 150 people twice a week for seven weeks, it was almost 2,000 meals, uh, at no cost to anybody but themselves, and I just thought that was really nice, and, uh, as Maria said, Assemblyman Colin Schmidt and his staff, and the carpenters local union 279 helped, uh, deliver all of that food, so that was really nice of everybody to participate in the team effort. Um, and that's all I have, so I'll, uh, go out to the board, trustee Graziano.
Good evening, thank you. First of all, I'm glad our region has met the metrics for the phase one reopening this week. As long as we continue to do our best, follow proper hygiene, and think of others, I am confident we will beat this virus once and for all. I also wish to thank all the first responders and essential workers, you have been the rock that we had clung to during the darkest of times, and we owe you, owe you a huge debt of gratitude. I also like to thank both Rich and Gary for their years of distinguished volunteer service on planning zone boards, you have both served the community well, and I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. With that being said, I also want to congratulate both Tom and Andrew on their respective appointments, and look forward to your community, your contributions moving forward. Uh, second, I'd like to thank the many of you out there who sent me texts and messages of support over the past week. Um, your words have meant a lot to me, and truly invigorated me now to stay the course of what I'm doing. Um, when we talk about moving Woodbury forward, it's about improving the future, not living in the past. It's about sound and prudent leadership, not myopic self-interest, nor the way it always has been done. I am here to serve the Village of Woodbury residents for as long as they wish to have. I will continue to conduct myself in a professional manner while doing so. Having an outburst can't come out to a grade school child losing its crayon because you didn't get your way as far from professional, and not what our community needs nor deserves. What it does demonstrate, though, is a lack of true leadership at the top, lacking the vision and humility to see the bigger picture of things moving forward. I am proud to serve on this board my fellow trustees, and we will continue to work tirelessly to earn your trust and your confidence. We've already accomplished an amazing amount of work over the first five months of this year, with much more to come, from much-needed zoning changes, setting up comprehensive plan and land preservation committees, providing residents a budget that has efficiently solved cash-based problems, increased resiliency, increased resiliency, all the while coming in under one of the lowest tax caps in recent memory. That, my friends and neighbors, is moving Woodbury forward. Stay healthy, be well, thank you.
Thanks, Chris, well said. Uh, I'm just gonna go top to bottom, trustee Burek.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for either attending, or those that are gonna be viewing later, um, the meeting. Um, as we are in the early stages of reopening our world, um, if we're confident and diligent, um, I, I know that in the next few months, we're, we're gonna see more normalcy come back into our lives and be restored. Uh, we will once again be able to see our loved ones and friends, and be able to dine out and socialize, um, and reunite with those in the community who we miss dearly. I just want to take a few minutes to remind everyone of how important it will be during this time, uh, more than ever, to support our local businesses, uh, many of which have been closed. This includes the ones that have remained open for the last two months, and also those that will be reopening. These local establishments have been there for us through our most trying times, and if you're able to, to, uh, now is the time to step up and help them get back on their feet. Every little bit helps, and will go a long way in their sustainability in our community. If there's one thing that I absolutely love about Woodbury, is that when we need to come together to support one another, we crush it every single time. I love to see this type of overwhelming support for the backbone of our community. On a final note, um, we are still accepting letters of interest for the land preservation committee, uh, through 4:00 PM on June 4th. Um, if there was ever a time you wanted to have an impactful role in preserving our beautiful community, now is that time. Um, I had an accounting professor in college that was, uh, very community-oriented, and a lot of my, who I am today is because of him. Um, and he used to say, quote, "One person at a time, one day at a time, and one project at a time, you can make a difference that will leave a lasting impact on the world. Please consider being that one person who devoted their time shaping the Woodbury of the future that you want to see by joining this committee." I also want to take very briefly to thank Rich Cattagio and Gary Kestenbaum, uh, for your service and dedication to our village. Uh, your tireless dedication is, is truly appreciated. Um, best of luck to Tom DeLuca and to Andy Zumas on your appointments to the planning and zoning boards. Thank you so much for stepping up to serve your community, uh, for its best interests and to protect its best interests. Uh, thank you, everyone, stay safe, and good night.
Thanks, Sarah.
Uh, just a correction, we're accepting letters till June 5th. Good Friday, Friday the 6th, yep.
Thank you.
That's okay, you're welcome.
Trustee Jacomaza.
Trustee Jacomaza, did you forget Gomez?
Actually, he was down there, so, yeah, we'll go to trustee Gomez first.
In order.
Jesus, sorry.
I don't know, um, well, thank you all, Kim, I participated here on, online. Um, looking to, uh, Mitch and Gary for their service, right? Um, and, uh, welcome, Tom and, uh, Andrew, welcome, and, uh, like we said before, when we ran, in the beginning, uh, the first term, we're here, usually are there Fridays to help, of course, now with the, uh, COVID-19, we can't do that, but we're still here to answer any questions you may have, emails and stuff, and trust us, we're not gonna pour your questions stupid, we won't, we won't do that to belittle anyone, especially like, anyone that has any kind of question, whatever they have. Please feel free to comment, and, uh, comment on our village meetings, or, like you said, you come, you come in, you watch your opinion, I mean, other places won't let you do it. We're here, we're very transparent, and we look to help you. You guys voted us in, you elected us to be, uh, a voice for you, so therefore, we shall be that voice, and not just pick who and when to do it, but we're here for everyone who you voted for, so, and my screen just went blank, so I don't know if I'm still on.
You are, just, you're just a witness protection.
Okay.
He says he's the voice, so you don't need to see the face.
Well, I've been on the computer all day today, so I guess it's acting up now, so just to say closing, thank you all, stay safe, stay healthy, that way we continue under phases and opening up, and hopefully, moving forward. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Jesus, trustee Jacomaza.
Yes, um, "When they go low, we go high," Michelle Obama. Uh, funny to hear a Republican actually quote a Democratic first lady, but I have always tried to put politics, people before politics. Uh, "Let us not seek the Republican answer, or the Democratic answer, but the right answer. Let us not seek to fix the blame for the past, let us accept our own responsibility for the future," uh, it was JFK. This current board of village trustees has strived to do that since January 1, whether that was the extensive code changes, or the comp review plan committee, or the resolutions for bail reform, and even the climate change, uh, what do you call resolution? You just need to look at our agendas to see the work that we're trying to do. We have a Water Protection Act upcoming, we have a building moratorium that we're studying. Uh, while we are doing all this, a certain group of individuals continues to kind of sow the seeds of dissent, trying to divide our community for their own political gains. This group of trustees is gonna stay on course, we're gonna take the next step, and continuing to take the next step. Uh, my good friend and fellow trustee CJ Graziano is known for what we call his kumbaya posts, where he talks about a community working together as one. These are not words for, uh, CJ. CJ puts these, these posts together and shares them on social media, and they come from the heart. He is a man who has not been in this community long, but he has done more in a short time than most, who are sowing those seeds of dissent. He truly cares. It is what I truly respect about this man, and I am proud to call him a friend. It is in the spirit of his speeches that I talk today about a new initiative I, I would like to begin with my fellow trustees. Initia-, uh, an initiative that hopefully reestablishes a sense of community, a sense of spirit about where we live. For many that choose Woodbury to raise their families, you probably did your research, you checked the schools, you drove around and decided, yes, we will put down roots here, small-town living. On behalf of this board, I thank you. Our goal, trustees, or my goal with this initia-, initiative is to reestablish that small-town spirit. I'm calling this One Woodbury, where we try to bring programs that are for children and the whole family, where we look at ordinances that help to protect our residents' quality of life, where we looked to the future to protect our natural beauty, where we bring residents of all sexes, races, religions, together, because we truly are all in this together. One of the many things I dealt with last year was a woman with, uh, a very horrific past. Her story was enough to make anyone, uh, get emotional. She moved to Woodbury to begin a new life, um, she parted the dark clouds and could see the sun. She found love again, but this time it was with another woman. Was it true, happy ending, you would think, until she started to be harassed by one of her neighbors about her sexuality, from one of our fine, upstanding citizens? Um, excuse me for a minute, this is not my Woodbury, this is not our Woodbury. Thinking about this woman, I must say, I can honestly say to you right now, I don't know if I could or would have the courage to come back from what she has been through. She is far braver than I could ever be. For the POS who feels it is okay to harass somebody based on their sexuality, I am done with you, I promise that, I am not done with you. Um, her story inspires the creation of this collection of individuals who I'll be putting together, who will help beautify the exterior Woodbury while beautifying the soul of Woodbury. Think about an initiative, I, I guess the way, the best way to put it, think about an initiative around what Colleen Pierce brings to Woodbury, her love, her dedication, her passion, that is the essence of what I'm trying to do here. A group of business leaders, AOH members, community volunteers, seniors, you name it, um, all representing a por-, a portion of my hope will make our community someplace you will want to stay forever. Uh, as we move forward with this, some of those things may be the banners, uh, that we're looking to put to honor our veterans and our, um, for Memorial Day and Veterans' Day, but it'll, it'll evolve, and it'll be more. Our land preservation is part of that initiative, and our water protection is part of that initiative. So I ask you to stay tuned, this is kind of our second act here in the Village of Woodbury, on what we want to do to improve the lives of people who have chosen to live here. So I want to thank you. Uh, I spoke to Gary and Rich personally, so they know how I feel, I thank them for their service, and, um, I wish Andy, who I've been there before on the zoning boards, I know what it's like, and I wish Tommy DeLuca, all the best, and thank you, that's it.
Thanks, Andrew. Amen. Desiree?
Yeah, sorry about that, I didn't realize I was unmuted before when I was humming the high school musical song, I apologize about that. Um, Andrew, your comments were very heartfelt, and I'm sorry that there's a person in town that's going through such abuse like that, I, I hadn't heard about that, and it's a shame in this day and age that something like that is happening. Um, I do need, if Andrew and CJ can just send me a summary of what y'all just said, cause Andrew, you talked really, really fast, and CJ, you're a little far from the microphone, so I couldn't hear you completely. Um, and then I was just asked by the chairperson of the beautification committee just to mention that the beautification committee has been working on, uh, those banners that you recently posted regarding the veterans. Um, obviously, with the, um, pandemic, they haven't been able to meet since, I think February was the last meeting the beautification committee had, but it is something we have information on, it is something that we started. Um, I'm not sure if we can put it on 32 like you proposed, because we don't own the street poles, in Monroe, they own the street poles on their main street.
I've already looked into it.
Okay.
I'm already.
All right, okay, well, maybe, um, you know, I'll let you know when the plant, when the beautification committee meets again, and, you know, maybe if you want to come to that meeting, I, I don't know, however, I just was asked to mention it, so I did. Um, and that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Des, Kelly?
Um, just one thing, as the board knows, you did, on the net law area, local law, you did receive comments from Shops at Woodbury, just as an example, but, um, I'm not sure if we had discussed if the board wanted any exemptions from this local law, uh, for any projects that have reached any certain level, you know, either through SECR or whatever else, I didn't know if you wanted to discuss that. If you do, I can make some changes or propose some changes based on your discussions.
You want to talk about that right now?
It's up to the board, um, but if you.
Quickly, I think we go, I think we're going to need to, just, you know, based on the letters specifically from Shops at Woodbury, they raised some significant points, and, uh, I, we're, we're gonna have to consider that. Go ahead, Tara.
I'm sorry, um, can we schedule, um, another attorney client with you, Kelly? Cause you sent over the schedule of planning board, uh, projects, and I want to make sure I completely understand what phase is what, and what the implications are?
Sure, um.
That's possible, okay.
Uh, whenever, let me look at my calendar, actually, not whenever you want.
I know, your, your book.
Um, but yeah, we can schedule another one, and I, I apologize for not being as clear in some of the information, I was trying to get it to you today, just in case you wanted some changes, so, but I think it would be good to have something, so we don't have to necessarily schedule that right now, I can send some dates out, if that works, if you want them at night.
Starting with next week, the week after, we have those two sets of interviews and the, and the re-arg meeting, so either next week or two weeks from next week.
5:30 usually a good time for you guys, or do you want later?
I can.
Okay, sounds good, I'll send you all an email, thank you, that was all I had.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Um, so, uh, with no other, anyone have any last thoughts, any final business? Jesus, you have something?
No, no, mine.
Oh, okay, you're one of, you want to make the motion, you want to get that, that in early. Just, you know, for other business, can I have a motion, I can do adjourn, please? Is that the motion?
I'll make that sound.
Okay, Tara, with the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
We're, just so the public knows, after adjournment, we're entering into a, an attorney-client session with special counsel, Dennis Lynch, right after this, on another meeting. So thank you all, and have a good night. I'll see, well, everybody knows that there's a second link to get back in, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good, we'll see you all in a few minutes.
Okay, have a good night.
You too, Kelly, thank you.
You too.
Kelly, good night.